Okay, it is seven oh five and I will now call the meeting to order and I'll ask Kim to do the pledge please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening everyone. Thank you so much for being here. Before we get to the agenda, or before we get to the first item on the agenda, Roger has suggested that we do the tour of the school's security system here in the FMS building as maybe the first item on the agenda. So unless there's an objection to that, that's what we'll do. But before we do that, I would like to actually do the board acknowledgements or comments at this point. Are there any?
Just remind you guys about the conference for the end of October if it works for folks. There are hundred seats reserved for VSBA members, which all of us are at that. It's free and open to the public. If you register, you get one of those seats where you actually have a seat as opposed to, you know, first come, first served and you get the book and that's registration with the conference, so.
So you're talking about the-
The Diane Ravitch is Wednesday night at Dartmouth, but that's a cosponsored event, Dartmouth and VSBA VSA.
Okay.
That event itself is open to the public, free I think, but there are limitations on the number of seats. So there are hundred seats reserved and will be held until, you know, such time that there's no longer seats or it gets closer to the date for people registering as part of the conference package. And then with that, if you're also, if you're registered for the conference, there's really no way to register just for the evening with Diane Ravitch.
Okay.
If you're registered for the conference, you can click that you'll go to the evening thing as well. And there's no additional cost for it, but it's part of the conference package price and that would include the book.
Includes her book. That's a great deal.
Yeah. So, but, so that they make sure that they've got enough seats for it because I think they said they could probably ask for more seats if they need to, but that would be the only way to be guaranteed a seat at that event.
So just a quick check is, who is planning on going to the annual VSBA meeting conference?
I am.
You got two. Are you able to go or interested in going?
I'm interested. I don't know if I can.
Okay. David, any interest?
Not sure.
Okay.
I'm interested, but again, I don't know. I know I definitely couldn't, I would definitely probably only be able to do a day thing.
Yeah. I've done that before. I've done like a down and back kind of thing.
Rachel, maybe you and I could do a down and back.
Okay. That would probably work well for me. Thank you.
Be great. Be great. I know that you and I try to go every year, so I think it'd be great for others to at least get that experience and if you can do a down and back and maybe share the driving or something, that would be great.
Can you get three people in one vehicle going down?
You could, yeah. You just can't talk.
Cause you'll have a quorum.
Or you go in the pickup and if you put your cap on your truck and somebody could-
I know, I could get it.
And the agenda's up at the VSBA website too, so you can see if there's a portion of the days that work better than another. The meals are, you can choose them or not choose them, but I think the conference price is one price, so if you go just one day or two days, it doesn't matter.
Right.
If you go one day, two days, or the evening before, it doesn't matter. The price is all the same.
And we've, and we've budgeted for the cost of our attendance, so it's in, it's in our budget for the-
And if you end up staying over, it's also, there are accommodations right at Lake Mori that can be paid for through the district as well and a much discounted price, so. You know, I understand. I've done a lot of the down and backs. I've sometimes done a down and back both ways, which is crazy that, that's actually really crazy.
Yeah.
But, but the Diane Ravitch thing is just at Dartmouth, which is, you know, a shorter drive.
And she's been getting a lot of national press. I mean, I've heard her, I think, twice on MPure in the last two weeks.
Yeah.
So, good.
It should be interesting.
The other thing I do want to mention out loud is that on October 2nd, hopefully, or we're gonna warn it, hopefully many of us or all of us can attend the public forum at the Essex High School about Calendar 2.0. I'm sure you have heard lots of conversations in the community about it. And one of the things that concerns me is that I've heard some people say, "I hear it's a done deal, so why bother?" So as far as I know, it's not a done deal. So if people are able to go and encourage people to go, please get that word out that it's not a done deal. People need to go and have their, you know, views expressed and need to learn more about the plan, I think, to make sure that you're fully informed. So we've talked about it generally as a board, about our, our role being to encourage people to get out and to learn as much as they can about the proposal. It may come to pass that at some point, we may want to take a position on the calendar, but if we are gonna do that, I would feel much better doing that if we all had attended some of these, at least one of these forums, so.
There are multiple dates, but that high school, the Essex High School one is on that second. I think there's St. Albans and-
Right. I think they're doing four.
Yeah, I'm likely to attend a different one just for personal logistic reasons.
Okay, great. As long as you can get to one, I think that's great.
Yeah. And it actually might be interesting for us not to all be at the same one because it's gonna be different for seconds.
That's true. That's true. Great. And then just as a friendly reminder, our next meeting is October 14th. Which is hard to believe.
And I just wanted to say one thing. I don't know how many of you have been to EES lately, but while the gardens here at Founders and EMS were looking wonderful, the EES gardens were not looking as spiffy. And Michelle Gorman has spent a lot of time, especially the two biggest gardens, right as you go into EES. And I just wanted to thank her for all her hard work because she has definitely put a lot of time into that.
That's great.
It's Michelle Gorman.
Nice.
And is she, um-
She has kids throughout the school district, yes.
So she's a parent?
Yes, she's a parent.
Volunteer her time.
Yep, she's got a couple at EES now and I think her oldest recently graduated from EMS. So she's, she's kind of got a crew.
Okay, so if, are there any other acknowledgements or comments from the board? Then why don't we take a minute to go down and do the security system tour?
Great.
Great. Okay, so we'll be back. Well, thank you for the tour of the security system and-
And I'm glad we didn't wait any longer and that the time you came in, for example, was, everything was still in full color and-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's actually neat to see what it is like in the dark also.
Yeah, it was interesting to be able to see the security cameras from every building, from this building.
Yeah.
So, thanks for the tour.
Is there access to those cameras at the central office?
Yes. They work through, through an IP address, so they, that access can be installed on any camera or to any computer here at school.
I presume not the actual opening of the door though, right? That is, that is unique to the building that the door is in?
Oh, yes, yes. You mean the ability to-
So we couldn't from here open the elementary door?
Oh, no, no, no.
But it could-
Or excuse me, you mean electronically through the controls? Yes.
You cannot lie.
Yeah, it can, it's, all of that software is on a district server and so we have it loaded on a few different machines at the central office and the technology folks, of course, at the middle school, but then we have it, have the program on one machine in each office. So the handful of us that have access, if we were in a building and needed to make a change for some reason before getting back to our, our own offices could do so right there.
But you can actually beep somebody in from a different building?
No, not, not beep in, but change times and-
Yeah.
Or individuals' access. Actually, we have like twenty-one different access codes. For example, the superintendent can enter any building three hundred sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day, where teachers have a little bit more restricted to time period and so forth.
Now can the, during the open times, can they shut, can they lock the doors?
Yes, the panic button is, is still there. Actually, it's, it's been revised given the new, the new locking gear that's been installed, but there is a panic button in each building, yes. So that, that would lock the interior door and-
In each building, right.
In that building and automatically dial the, the police.
Wow, okay. Great. Well, that was a major initiative and discussion point from last year, so it's great to see it installed and in action and going live tomorrow.
Correct.
And this was an investment of our reserve funds, correct?
Yes, yes.
Great. Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, well, moving on to the next, or the first item agenda, second, second item agenda is the consent agenda and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it re- Accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
All second.
All those in favor? I. Opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Consent agenda is approved. Agenda item number three, we already did the second bullet, so we'll move right into the monitoring report on 2.8 Superintendent Communication and Support to the Board. And representing the superintendent tonight is Roger George.
Yes.
And do you want to tee this up at all, Roger, or do you wanna?
I wanted to ask your preferences. The superintendent often would do. I can walk through the, the various points and briefly mention the updated information or if you just wanted to do it more on a question and answer basis, we could do that, that too.
Do folks have a preference?
I'm just clarifying that the green is the updated information tonight.
The green is the, is the new information, updated information, yes.
I, I, I read through it personally, so I don't, I mean, if you have something that you want to highlight or anything Mark would want to highlight, but otherwise.
I, I want to just say that I appreciated some of the detail around the number of reports and the number of emails, you know, just in terms of getting to that level of specificity. Some of it was surprising. So for example, fifteen separate incident, incidental documents for the board and a hundred and eight incidental updates over the past year was eye-opening. Not realizing that there had been that many.
And the superintendent sent me with this red folder that has paper copies of all those-
So any, any questions or observations about the monitoring report that folks have?
Now, in the past, didn't he report compliance or partial compliance or not? Didn't Mark rate himself and he did not on this?
On each item.
In the last page.
The very last page, he, he said, "I report compliance in all policy areas," but he never filled out that, that attached worksheet.
I was looking for it under each of the nine and I didn't see the last one.
So the one thing I'm realizing is a PDF, um, we wouldn't be able to, at least I'm not seeing that I'm able to go into that monitoring form and click in it and fill it out and separate it from the rest of the material.
Right.
Can I cut and paste it into another document, do you think?
I think, I think you could, you, you might be able to do that. It might be easier to print and to fill it out.
Yeah.
This was sort of one of the areas that we had talked about. How do we fix this part? To, to make sure that we accurately sort of capture board comments and concerns about the monitoring report. One of the things we had discussed, or one process we had discussed, was a meeting to discuss the monitoring report and then have board members hand these in at the following meeting as an, as a feedback mechanism to Mark. Even though the, at that point, the report had been approved, it would be a way for us to capture anything that he didn't capture from our conversation for continuous improvement for the next time that the monitoring report was due.
So I, um, I did just cut and paste it.
Okay.
The format.
Into a new Google Doc?
Uh, I, I put it in, I opened Word, but I'm, I'm sure I could probably do the same into a new Google Doc, let me see. But I put it in Word, it messes with the format a little. Maybe less so in Word if it were originally a Word doc or a, I'm sorry, a Google doc.
Can I just make a note about the form and even some of the policy, the monitoring? And it wasn't, it's more the wording of it. It seems like there's a lot of negative wording, which when reading through it quickly, especially for the first time, I kept having to like stop myself and reread it to say, so for example, neglect to submit, you know, and that just, I had to think about what exactly. And it was just, so my just thought is, looking at this, I just think that makes it very confusing to read and answer very clearly.
This is harkening back to our, some of our initial conversations about policy governance because, you know, the executive limitations are exactly that. They are the "daught shall nots" of the superintendent. And so you're right, that the tone is somewhat forced by the fact that this is how the policy is written.
Yeah.
And maybe that sends the wrong message, but that's, I mean, it's a good observation, but I think it's one that I have stopped, I guess, noticing because of just the familiarity of the policies.
But it's a good reminder because it does definitely, I mean, there are plenty of other people that haven't been doing this since we created these, that are trying to understand our policies and with whom we are trying to engage and so, um, as I, you know, we-
So then you flip to the interpretation and you go back and read the, you know, policy. It's like you kind of have to go back and forth and, okay, now we know what we're asking.
Interpretation and data are presented positively.
Exactly. It just is very challenging to-
But I agree, it wouldn't be that hard to write these all in the positive, but that does-
It would be rewriting.
Directly contradicts the form of the policy government.
I'm writing it down as a piece of feedback for consideration.
Exactly. And it's just in the policy in general, the way it's, and that's just me.
And I would say, um, the Google doc, you completely mangled it. So you can cut and paste it into, I kept the table when we put it in a Word document.
Okay.
And with minimal format issues. So that is beneficial to anybody.
So what would be the best way for board members to sort of record their response to, to these monitoring reports? Is it through a form like the one that was attached? I think this was a, a form that Mark has been attaching to his monitoring reports. We haven't been very active in using them. Is this the best mechanism?
I think it, I think it works because if you have an issue, you're gonna do it. If you don't have an issue, sort of, the absence of us turning it in, the absence of me sending this to Mark sort of implies, yeah, Mark, I agree with you.
Right.
If I'm gonna disagree with Mark, I'm gonna go home and I'm gonna print this thing out and I'm gonna tell him why.
Right.
Or have a discussion here, but like, um, and, um, and I'm, I'm thinking that right now because there are a couple of issues that I have with this one that I would like to discuss or give feedback on. So that's why I'm thinking, yeah, usually I, it's no big deal there, so I'm like, you know, whatever. Okay, I forgot to send it in. Well, I don't have anything really all that exciting to say anyway, other than, great, Mark.
Yeah. And I think for me, I try to give my feedback directly to Mark during the meeting.
Right.
So for me to then do it again as a worksheet doesn't make a lot of sense to me in terms of my, my, my process.
Well, that's why I was wondering if even as we're sitting here or when we're reviewing it at home, that becomes a document we can click in or, you know, I think all of us actually are having our tools in front of us most often, that we could be responsive right there. But I wouldn't want that to be in lieu of discussion because there, that really has to- I, I think it's more capturing from our point of view, our questions, issues, concerns, or areas that we are feeling good about. Mark is always, you know, vigilant in taking his notes, but I think he'd like for there to be something coming from us that's sort of validating his interpretation of what we're saying, so that he knows for the next time.
What about this? What about, we have the conversation about the monitoring report and then I take notes about our conversation. And then as a, as a follow-up item to this meeting, I, I send all of you a copy of the feedback form that, that tries to collect all of the feedback that was given at the meeting. And then that gets submitted to Mark at, you know, at the next meeting.
Or even before the next meeting.
Does it have to be at the next meeting? I was gonna say, yeah, I could-
So that might be another way.
If you're taking notes and we're either, if we haven't gotten something to you by Wednesday or something, you send out the reminder. If you haven't already sent me your feedback, do so because we might get good enough at it that, that you, I would hate for you to have to have so many steps in the process as your follow-up to it, but I would imagine that there are gonna be plenty of times where we may not. Or if I know I'm sitting here and I can do this and just send it to you in an email now or whenever I'm done with my comments, because maybe we're each keeping track of our own comments too.
Right.
You can see what you've got on Wednesday or by whatever day it seems reasonable to people. I don't know. I don't want you to have so many steps that it becomes something-
Well, I also want it to be useful for Mark, so, um, but I, the other thing I'm worried about too is that providing feedback, I'm trying to figure out, if we approve tonight's monitoring report, the feedback is still helpful for Mark for the next time, right? So I'm trying to think of the times when we would say, I guess it doesn't matter, approval-
There's times where we've said, "No, we can't approve because they are, you know, we've collectively agreed there were pieces missing," just like any one of our reports where we'll either be able to do a friendly amendment or we'll have to table it.
And sometimes those are the ones, the worksheets that would probably be the most comment-filled is where, when we don't approve of a monitoring report because we're looking for X, Y, or Z data to support the interpretation, perhaps.
I'm guessing on those occasions, he's taking serious- Very good notes on the occasions where he's gotta go back to deal with it.
So why don't we do this then? Why don't, just as you suggested, Kim, regardless of how we act on this report tonight, folks have until Wednesday to send me a version of the form. And it's either the form and how you want to fill it out, or it's just an email to me with your general feedback. So it's not dependent on you mastering the form. But if you have specific feedback about any aspect of the report, I will collect that. If it's not in my inbox by the end of day Wednesday, it doesn't get to Mark because I think that's-
That sounds reasonable because you can't be spending your time fishing around for-
I don't want to have to keep bugging people for, you know, their comments.
I do think though, I think what you're just talking about right now, I think we should also pick up with the unity of control thing, talk about how we communicate with Mark. Cause that, you, you know, I'm always sending emails. Brendan, should I talk to Mark about this or does this have to come from the board?
And today's, I was like, okay, the loop's nothing closed. I need to at least have some idea of what we do in response.
Right, so I think-
So, um-
Let's remember that prior.
Perfect example for the next-
Item number eight in the report, the board as a whole. Right. Right, so yeah, we touched on that issue of speaking as a unified front here and also in 3.1, so.
Yeah, I think this, this kind of talks about Mark's supposed to talk to us as a group and that talks about we're supposed to talk to Mark as a group.
Right.
I think as I look at the form too, there, um, the form is very yes, no, check it off or don't check it off, like reasonable interpretation by the superintendent, yes, no. Data demonstrated accomplishment of the interpretation, yes, no. In compliance, yes or no. And, you know, presumably unless he's not in compliance and has given us a plan for becoming into compliance, I guess we aren't supposed to accept the monitoring documents. So in theory, if we were holding to just the content of this form as feedback for him, I don't view that it wouldn't be necessarily all that informative for him. It wouldn't bring him the content of the conversation, I don't think.
I think that's the comment at the bottom.
So I think, um, this is sort of a, you know, in a bad situation where you're not happy with the superintendent, you want to make sure you're being honest in the checkoff part so that when reflecting back on this at evaluation time or otherwise, there's a honest feedback in those pieces. But in the end of the day, if we've mostly said in compliance, we're, we're approving that document.
Right.
And so I think we can say yes on all of those things. I may still have commentary that is beneficial for the next iteration on the report. And so I guess I would encourage that, that be looked at kind of in both ways because for you and I, when we went through to do the evaluation and pulled up all those monitoring reports and I was filling out the boxes so that we sort of knew how, what our feedback was from those times, the confines of that form is helpful.
Right, that's true.
But the comments are the part that's gonna be really helpful in, in getting Mark, what will be benefiting him next time around.
I think you're right.
So I, I would ask folks if it's not too cumbersome to try and do a little bit of both, even if it's a maybe.
Right.
You know, just so that, and maybe, maybe has comment or something.
Right. And I think that people, you know, regardless of how you fill out the top part of the form, you can still provide any kind of commentary that you want. So again, I, I don't want people to be inhibited by the form being wonky or not. So worse comes to worse, an email with just regular text to me by the end of day Wednesday is better than nothing if you have feedback.
And I think Mark is, is really looking for this. I mean, it's come up when we've had conversations with him and it's come up a lot for all of us, that it'd be very helpful and I think respectful and appropriate for us to do. All of us, this is just not something we've done a great job on and it's something we want to do better for Mark. So I don't think we should feel as though he'll take any comments personally. Obviously, I think we're all respectful when we provide him feedback, but I think it, honest feedback is gonna be the most beneficial.
Well, one of our five goals this year is to become better at monitoring ourselves and mon, and providing feedback to Mark. So I think that's perfect, a perfect way to sort of segue into whether or not there are more questions or comments about the report, um.
My, my-
I'm sorry, David raised the standard. David?
Friendly amendment, page four. Local demographer is Bill Smith, not Bill Wilson.
Okay.
Looks like Roger Arity discovered that. And I just closed out what I was gonna look at, so I'm not sure if I can get it back. The other thing, on page five, where I think that we've been kind of lax and this ties into 3.1, my report. There's been various meetings where in the discussion of what information is required, someone will say, "Well, I think that we should have this and I think that we should have that." That is the opinion of one individual and it does not become a formal request at a board meeting unless it's voted on by the board and unanimous. That is the only time that a, a request would be formalized for the superintendent barring, well, from a meeting, but still that allows Brendan to have his discussions as chairman for various discussions with Mark as appropriate.
Page four, the very last word of the green section, demographer Bill Wilson versus Smith. Yeah, it should be Smith, not Wilson.
And then my other comments were the green print on page five.
Which is the first or second green print?
Uh, just above the section nine.
In item number eight.
Gotcha.
Yeah, Mark had mentioned that there have been several occasions this past year when individual board members have asked for more information from the superintendent during the public meeting without the full board endorsement and so that, uh-
So when the board, I think what his point is, is when, when the board is deciding it needs more information about a particular issue, it needs to be a board request and not an individual member's request. And so the board needs to become better at that process of, is this, you know, of having a resolution to request more.
As an example, last spring, I said, "Hey, Mark, there was not enough ADA info. I had a question about the ADA." We should have then had a vote that said, "Does the board want to hear more about the ADA?" And if the four of you said, "We don't care," then I would have been like, "All right, guess I'm overruled."
Yeah.
So we should have said that as a group.
Had a process and I think we did that process when it came to, um, the, there were subsection information on testing results and it was like apples and oranges and like, oh. I'm sorry, but this, we had a ton of data on the last one. We had like no data on this one and we sent it back collectively, but we had inquired about that. And I think we did vote on the bullying follow-up as a board at this table.
Last meeting?
When he came back to us with that bullying subset of data.
Oh, right, yeah.
We had previously, as a board, discussed that data lacking from that occasion before. So there are, I think inconsistently, we have done it.
I think you're right.
And inconsistently, we've not done it and-
Yeah, so I think that you're right. I mean, I think, and we'll talk more-
Because I don't want to preclude us from conversation at the table.
No, no, absolutely not.
That may challenge and I think maybe part of what Mark was talking about too is, and I think that's all gotten better for us, the part at the beginning, like board acknowledgements as opposed to that being opening a new subject matter. It's an acknowledgement of either something- It's a acknowledgement of either something that happened or a notification of a meeting or something versus an inquiry. And maybe that has a different place and maybe that's towards the end when we're talking about future agenda items.
Right. I think there's two things, right? I think that there's the end of the meeting where we say, um, can you scroll? Oh, you're not there. And I, I think there's a, a language at the bottom, or there used to be language at the bottom.
Future agenda items.
Where it would say future agenda items. And so that would be an opportunity for board members to suggest items. Um, and I think what we did a couple of times is we get to the end of the meeting and have a conversation about monitoring report evidence. I think a couple of times we did that. Instead of having that conversation within the context of the.
Oh, in advance of the upcoming.
Right, right. Or, or sometimes even we would get to that point in the meeting and be talking still about the evidence that we wanted to see about the monitoring report that we had just approved.
That we'd already approved.
Yeah, so I think we just need to get better about, about making sure we're having those conversations within the boundaries of that particular agenda item. So.
And I, as noticing that it's not there, Brendan, I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense for us to put that back because I think we had always had it there.
Yeah, I think it was.
Blame someone else.
No, no, I just, yeah, I don't think we deliberately took it off, but I think it gives the placeholder for topical follow-up type stuff that.
Yeah, there's two things.
Decide as a board, is this something that is a sooner agenda item or a later agenda item or not an agenda item?
There's two things I wanna see before we adjourn at every meeting and that's um, the review of the annual work plan. So there's three things. The review of the annual work plan, the feedback about how did the meeting go, could the meeting have been done better? And then the third one would be future agenda items. So we should always do those three things at the end of every meeting. And so I'll make sure that that gets back on the agenda. I'm writing a note to myself so I don't forget.
Don't say anything while Brendan's writing.
You'll have half of a sentence.
I hate that when you write the first word and then go on to something else.
Okay. So back to this, back to this monitoring report, um, is, is there any data missing from this monitoring report?
I wouldn't say data missing. I do have issue with some of the, the, you know, he stated at the bottom, which thank you for pointing out. He stated that he was in compliance.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I do question a couple of those items and probably the biggest one being number three. Um, about submitting unbiased decision, um, information. And I go back to the, the discussion, the, um, some of. The example being, you know, the, the very, very obvious strong dissent that's it throughout some people within the district. About um, the data that Ellen presented to us and that approach and, you know. The number of times Kathy Grace was here, obviously adamantly disagreeing with what was being presented. And the almost, you know, shock that Kathy Barwin had when she was here that one time, I think to present us her resignation letter. She actually had a letter that she never gave to us. Um, because the data, all of a sudden was questioning her school. And she had not been informed that that was gonna happen, that her data, that her school's data was gonna be presented. Um, and then it was presented and she left and went and got other information to bring to us.
Hmm.
Um, at that time. And so I feel like there is a lot of, you know, when it talks about unaware of relevant trends. I, I think there's a lot of dissent throughout pockets of our school district towards curriculum, curriculum development. And the problem is all of a sudden, that's means, it's curriculum development. We're not supposed to do that.
Right.
We're supposed to monitor things more at a higher level.
I mean, you bring up a very good point because clearly within any organization, um, there are different factions. You know, that have different perspectives on issues. And I guess what I'm trying to figure out as you're saying that is, is that, is the board's job to figure that out? Or is it the board's job to hear from our sole employee, which is the superintendent, a report about curriculum or.
Right, right.
Or test scores or whatever it might be. And so I think that gets into an issue of, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to navigate that.
That's, that's been my challenge, yeah.
Tricky to figure out because we don't know what we don't know.
That's right.
And we don't know and it, it's not a matter of not trusting the data, but data can be presented in a way that you get. The same data could give one picture.
Right.
Or an entirely different picture. And I don't know that we know. Know enough about what's available to always feel certain that we have the pic- the whole picture.
Right.
And so, you know, then when you're hearing of other factions of ways to look at things. It makes you wonder then, you know, did we ask for enough to see.
Right.
Why this is the way we're looking at it because um, I don't doubt for one second people are working as hard as they can to. Improve outcomes for kids versus have data defend strategy. I don't think that that's what we're doing.
Right.
But part of what we need to do is have the community and the school district and people who we're responsible to. Feel as though we've done due diligence.
Mm-hmm.
In getting the evidence that supports the claim that we are, you know, doing what we can to achieve outcomes for kids in, in that particular situation. Which I think was an, an ends version.
Yeah.
So I, that I think becomes tricky for us because we don't know what the indicators are that are. Um, best practice or that, it's just a tricky area to navigate without knowing that this data supports this.
Right.
Ends policy.
Where, and where I was really, where I really tried to go with that was, I, I went to Mark back in April, I'll say, I don't know, spring. And said, Mark, where's that Reed report? Cause I really wanted to see what it was that, you know, we had commissioned, not necessarily, well, me, I was before, I was even on the board. But the board had essentially, the district had commissioned this report saying.
Oh, so you missed the presentation that we got about the Reed report?
No, I think I got the presentation. I was here when the Reed report came out. It was like, write about that, write about that.
Yeah.
But anyway, so then I went and I actually got the whole hundred and sixty page document from him and, and honestly, that was challenging to get. I mean, I, I had to dig for it.
Right.
Um, I don't think he wanted to just pass that out. But I, I got the whole thing and I started finding the, the things, here's the things we need to be monitoring. It's according to Reed, here's what we need to be monitoring, here's what we need to be doing. That's why my question's.
When, when you say we, do you mean the board or do you mean the district?
The district.
Right.
The district needs to be assessing kids in these ways.
Yeah.
This different data. And so in my mind, that data should exist.
Right.
So in my mind, we should be able to say to Mark, to Ellen, to whoever, whatever, I mean, we can say it to Mark and he can tell Ellen to get it, whatever. We're not supposed to tell Ellen. Um, and I do, I feel like here's what's we're supposed to be getting and we're not being presented that data. As I say, some of the data was the apples to oranges thing, which we all kinda had issues with. And that's why, for me, I've wanted to get that very, very specific data. Because I feel like we haven't been shown that.
Mm-hmm.
Or maybe that helps inform indicators, like maybe that type of external monitoring that happens with audits of any sort. In that case, it was a special ed audit. Similarly, like on Roger's financial audit.
Right.
Those create indicators that we would then be looking for. And I know, like in the years as you walked into it, Roger, and, and there were no procedure manuals. And all of those things as you came in became our indicators as we went forward for what we achieved, considered to be evidence. Of being in compliance because sometimes that external monitoring informs us as laypeople. To what would be reasonable indicators.
Right.
For these reports and that, I think it's, it's the area that we've probably struggled most with is figuring out what are the indicators. For especially things like the ends monitoring.
Right. So back to your original question, Dan, under section three of the monitoring report. You have reservations about whether or not we have enough data or evidence to support the interpretation.
And, and yeah, and a sense that what we've been given is not unbiased. We've been given really one person's interpretation.
Right. What would unbiased data, where, who, what, where, where should we get that data? If it, if it doesn't come from Mark, where should we, where should we get that data?
That's a very good question. Um, and I don't feel like it's come from Mark. I feel like it's come from Ellen because she's the one who's really presented. Yeah, Mark has kind of said, and here we go, Ellen, take it away. You know, and that's fine. I mean, I realize Ellen is, is in that position. I think it's appropriate. And, you know, I don't, I'm not quite sure where to go with this because I guess, say, I, I, I've heard, obviously, we've all heard. A couple of people who've been here in the meeting, um, but then also from other outside sources, parents, uh, outside educators. Um, just about some of the stuff that I feel like we should be hearing here at the board, that should be a more public forum. Um, things that have been offered to our district, that our district has turned down.
Right.
Um, opportunities to educate our teachers and teaching systems that have been, said, no thank you, we don't want that.
Right.
Um, and. I don't know, wh- this is the frustration I have with policy governance is I can't go to Peter Farrell or I can't go to, you know, Joyce and say. Joyce, help me out here, give me some data.
Right.
Uh, that's just not, we, we're not allowed to do that.
Right.
Um, and so I'm, I'm in a quandary.
Yeah.
So does it make it, so what are you, are you saying that like if, when they presented it, if there were representatives from that area here? That, that would make you feel like it's more, less biased, like more collaborative? Is that what? I'm trying to, I'm trying to listen to what you're saying and.
I think that would be good. I think if, if, if Peter and Kevin and Joyce were here, or even if we're looking specifically at. In those particular presentations, there were very specifically a certain subset of teachers that would be working with those kids. Having some kind of more open forum for those people.
One of the things that, when I, when I was first on the board, and you probably remember this, um, is that the principals, I think at least twice a year, would present to the board.
Mm-hmm.
They used to come into a principal's report once a month, right?
Was it once a month?
I think so.
Really?
Yeah. David will remember.
One of my problems with policy governance is that in my younger days on the board, not only were we given uh, curriculum presentations. We approved the curriculum. When a curriculum, for example, was being developed, we had periodic reports on it. We had uh, staff members come in and do those presentations, the subcommittees. Brendan, you're right that I think it was once a month, we had principals and directors report.
Okay.
When we went to policy governance, oversimplification, Mark being our one employee. He can basically present to us anything that he wants. And it's up to us perhaps to read between the lines to figure out what he is. And is not presenting to us and uh, request more information by consensus of the board. Or approve what he says and uh, make a suggestion for future reports.
Right.
But under the policy governance thing, quite honestly, I don't feel that I know anywhere near as much about what is happening in the schools. As I did in history.
Hmm.
And that is problematic to me, but also looking at it from the idea that the board of directors for the. IBM Corporation do not know what happens in Essex Junction versus fish kill versus left-hand overshoe. And they quite honestly don't care because they're concerned with the bottom line and uh, the future, which. It's basically what we are with Mark. It's a line that we chose to draw when we went to policy governance and.
But what I'm hearing from this conversation, and we've drifted off topic a little bit into talking about policy governance versus this monitoring report. What I'm hearing though is that there are certain board members that would like to, to hear from other members of the administrative or leadership team. That we don't hear from on a regular basis.
But that's Mark's call, being our one employee, not our call, perhaps.
Right. But in terms of giving him feedback about evidence, you know, part of the evidence could be presentations by.
In those people.
By leadership team members.
Actually, he's writing that in number six as data. And he's indicating, uh, continues to be observed by the superintendent that times on the agenda are strained when guests are in the audience.
Mm-hmm.
The superintendent can improve the quality of the presentation by more actively engaging principals and other members of the leadership team. And analyzing student performance data during creation.
And that would be wonderful if you take that and then put it into the monitoring report saying also reviewed by X, Y, Z people. And what, whether or not, like, the way I look is, I wouldn't necessarily know if the evidence he's providing is biased or unbiased, quite honestly. But he's providing the da- data that he's received, but maybe if you then also, maybe it just helps us to understand if we see that. Okay, yes, we did at leadership meeting, we reviewed this information with, you know, Ellen and Peter and Joyce and Kevin. And they all agree that this is a fairly equal representation of what it is. And just that alone, not necessarily because who's, I mean, it would be wonderful to have everybody come to more board meetings. In reality, is that going to escalate?
I think the ends though are only monitored like once a year, right?
Right, right.
Some maybe twice a year.
Yeah.
But there may be occasions that that, um, somewhat hearing it directly, just as we do when we have our financial reports. And Rogers.
I was gonna say, an analogy might be on a couple of the financial reports, there's also a statement from me attesting that the information.
And often on those, you are here too. I mean, you are actually often here on some of the largest of those reports. Um, you know, to sort of bear witness to what was largely a lot of your work, I'm sure. And, and Ellen does come in those capacities under, um, the ends monitoring. But it might be the occasion where we also have the opportunity to hear from the other building leaders.
I'm glad that, I'm glad that you remind, I, I remember reading this after you said it, that part of his plan, uh, his action plan moving forward. Is to engage principals more. So I think that's a positive sign.
That's exactly what.
Yeah, so we can, we can second that.
And you know what? The other thing I'm thinking about, just kind of in analogy, is sometimes we've, we've had the ninth graders come in and give us a little presentation. And we've had the, you know, when we did the, they did the community garden, we had a presentation or. I remember you, several years ago, we had the kids who went to Peru, you know, we had those presentations. Would it be appropriate to have a presentation of that level by staff?
Yeah.
To say, here's what the staff are seeing, experiencing, doing, learning, um, helping the, helping the district grow and progress.
So for example, when PTO did a combination with like Karen Jeffrey and there, there was a group of teachers who were talking about the curriculum development.
Yeah.
And that was, so if we're talking about, if it meets up with something else we're discussing, that would be a wonderful presentation, Dan.
That's true.
But then do we go say to the teachers, please come to our board meeting? Or do we say, Mark?
I think that goes back to Mark. It's, it's up to Mark to find the.
I would think it does bring a richer, it puts color on the data. Or it puts color on the commentary that's written to have. And I think that happened when, um, was it Carly, who came on the science curriculum? I mean, that was, that was very informative.
It was, yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, David.
Using two point eight as the example, seeing as how we've been discussing it for.
Yeah, we're a little bit. Yes, David.
Is there a problem with the data that's presented in this report? Or is there a problem that we think that more data should be provided in this report?
I've, I've heard two things. I've heard Dan say that, um, that he is not sure about the statements in section three. Um, but I'm also wondering how much of that is particular to two point eight and how much of that is a general comment about. Monitoring reports in general, you know, in terms of whether or not we're getting the right data from the right people.
Yeah. I, and, and the, the, the hot button issue, clearly because we've talked about it more than any others in the last year. Has been those, the, the data issue for the.
Data, David.
For the, um. Yeah, the free and reduced lunch kids and the, the IEP kids who, the, the group that struggles the most in our district.
Right.
I mean, obviously if there, we had no group that was struggling, I'd say, great. But that's why, you know, this, this one keeps coming up. Because this is, this is our one weak, our, our most significant weak spot is that literacy for that group.
Okay.
I am under the impression right now that if there is no uh, issue with the information that is presented in this report. Except for the friendly amendment, uh, Wilson to Smith, that we should adopt this policy as presented. With possible suggestions for future monitoring.
Well, um, so if you're making a motion, I, I would second that motion, but.
Make that motion.
But, so I second it. And for further discussion, I would say that, um, I think that the evidence, the interpretation and the evidence to support passage. Of this monitoring report exists here, but I've also taken a page and a half of notes about ways that Mark could improve. Generally, monitoring reports to the board. Um, and I think we're gonna probably circle back to this on three point one as well. And I think we're gonna probably circle back to this on three point one as well.
Yeah, this conversation is not over.
I have one other comment that wasn't about data.
Yes. Great.
But related to the incidental information, and I always appreciate getting it, but there are, there are occasionally things that we will get in incidental information that won't have a public comment piece of it, not that that's information unavailable to others in our board packet, but, um, I, I'm pretty sure we got the change in staffing around language and incidental information item. And it's one of those things when you're changing, um, a course offering or a program is likely to become, you know, something the board will be hearing about. It's a change outside of a budget cycle with the personnel matter, so, um, there are occasions where that may happen. And I can think back to last year in class size. And then it ends up becoming a hot button and then we get reactive on it versus having information in maybe a more formal manner versus just an incidental information. On, there are some things that we might anticipate that would generate more public concern, you know, music changes, language changes.
Right.
Class size issues that I think on those occasions are more substantial than incidental information.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, and I, I share that observation that I think, I, I actually feel like the incidentals give me a better handle on what's going on in the buildings than I used to have. But I think you're right, there are times when it seems like a particular bullet item, um, if not today, you know, three months from now might pop up again. Um, once the full impact of that incidental information is felt in the district somewhere.
And I believe a lot of times those could be anticipated.
Right.
Yeah.
So anticipation of, of incidentals that could be hot buttons.
Yeah, and those would then come up in the context, like, language, for example.
Yeah.
Might be one of those sort of off schedule, not a monitoring report, but it would have its agenda item as one point one or one point, wherever it falls in ends.
Right.
Um, because if it were presented in a budget cycle, it would be spoken of in the context of the ends policies if we were funding or defunding a program.
Right.
And so in that, similarly, I think we probably find, class size has a policy, so it would have an agenda placed to have a title that, and it, and it happens occasionally anyway that Mark will do that, that he'll put a title on an off cycle, not a monitoring item coming back on bullying
Update or conversation, yeah.
or whatever the situation is, that I think there are situations like that, music, all three of those sort of popped.
Yes.
Got them as an incidental and then popped as an issue.
Right.
And we had to be reactive versus anticipating.
Right, so I think that in our review of incidentals and in my conversations with Mark prior to the agenda being issued, I, I think a good test would be, okay, of these incidental items, are any of them, uh, could any of them be discussed within the confines and context of a policy? You know, either today or tomorrow.
Right.
Because had any enough at the pass, I would speak, in the present, might be better than waiting for something to percolate and be reactive.
We end up being either not fully informed or able to be responsive and we feel reactive.
And when you say discussed within the terms of a policy, discussed at a board meeting.
Right, right, so for example.
So we just have one of those little, like, whatever we're calling board job description, it's not a monitoring document.
It's a conversation.
It's a conversation, so we have a title for the conversation because we can probably align some of those things with, um, a policy.
Right.
And that, you know, it, that I think is informational even in helping our community and parents understand when these things are brought into the context of a board conversation.
Right.
It's by virtue of its place in our policy.
That's right.
And so in some of the questions that came to us, they were posed in that context with respect to policy.
Yep. They were.
And we were not, um, able to be responsive.
Yes.
So.
So that's great feedback, Ann. I've got it right here. Are there any other comments? There's a motion on the table.
My other comment I don't think is, is worthy of the discussion right now, um, it's an old issue. I, if, if the, if the desire is to vote to adopt this as presented, um, I, I can't because I don't believe he's in compliance on number three.
Okay.
But.
Well, the vote doesn't have to be unanimous.
You're, you're right.
So, um, so what are the, just help, so for Mark's feedback, what, what are the areas of, of this report that don't pass muster with you?
Um, basically that one. The, I don't think that the data that we've been presented is as unbiased as it needs to be.
In this report or over the course of the year for all monitoring reports?
Um.
So I'm trying to, what I'm trying to figure out is, is it this monitoring report or is it the overarching?
No, it's more overarching. It's more overarching. It's, I, I don't have anything wrong with how this is written and his data and his evidence that he's presented. I just, I disagree that what he's presented to us at different times throughout the year is, is as unbiased as I would like it to be.
Okay.
And obviously the hot button issue being the, the, the data on the literacy stuff and the, and the curriculum development literacy.
Okay, any other feedback or comments before I call the question on this report?
I'm feeling like as long as we modify with that feedback, incidentals versus finding conversation places for bigger issues, I can support this because I would say he's providing us evidence that says he's given us lots of incidental information.
Right.
And I think that the hair splitting there is about what is more than incidental.
Yeah, and I think it may, I think that's a great conversation, and I think, you know, what, um, what this, what this form of governance is supposed to do is elicit those kinds of conversations. And so I think it's working. We should not be concerned that we have questions and even some dissension on this particular policy. I think that these, this is the kind of feedback that Mark has requested.
Yep.
And I've got a lot to give him.
They're holding ass for Mark.
And actually you're taking some notes as well.
So, um, if there's no other discussion, then I will call the question. Uh, all those in favor of approving this monitoring report as presented with the friendly amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, motion carries.
Four zero.
Monitoring.
Four one.
Four one.
Four one, excuse me. I can't count.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's never happened before.
It's okay. No, that's actually okay. Yeah.
Breaking ground.
It's happened before, but just not since you've been there.
That's true.
Cause I've done it.
All right.
We're very principled people sometimes.
It's eight twenty, so we are, we are running a little long, so, um, I will turn now to, uh, the, at, at our last meeting, we had requested as a follow-up to a monitoring report that we approved, some additional data about discipline incidents. For the, and, and Mark was able to give us the information in our packet from last year. Um, and so I wonder if, Roger, do you have any?
Just, just a couple of points of information. The, uh, three hundred some referrals at, at each building are either, uh, teacher referrals to the building offices or, or self-referrals on, uh, students' parts. These are those that are formally addressed. Of course, there's other inquiries that might be, come to the office that aren't, that, that there's not a need to formally address. Superintendent, for example, indicated that in addition to the three hundred sixty-nine referrals that were addressed at the elementary office, there were another five hundred and twenty-three referrals of just little bumps and scrapes on the elementary school playground during, during recess.
Life, life as an elementary school, yeah.
Roger stepped on Suzie's hand or whatever, so, so, but, uh, so those are numbers that, that are formally, uh, uh, investigated. They are, uh, he, Mark did mention also that, that coming back in October with an ends report, he would be discussing strategies for responding and, and responding to and dealing with these, these formal referrals that have been.
Are you aware, um, my question is, are you aware of a historical trend line? So for example, this is two twelve thirteen school year. Do we have information from the prior year? And does the administrative team track trends that then might, might be happening within the building or types of?
I can't say for certain. I, I don't recall if, if, I, I imagine that data is available for previous years. I have not been a part of a discussion on how the results are trending though.
Well, I don't, I actually don't know if we've been able to track the data over a long period of time because I'm not sure how.
I think the, I think the tracking and recording has, has seen improvements in recent time.
Right, right, that's what I'm thinking as well.
I think it's been required by the state that you report at least harassment, right?
It, it has been required, yes.
I think that bullying piece is clearly recent, but.
I think, I think we've taken a, a closer look at, at exactly what it is we're, we're seeing as problematic and how we're recording that though.
And I'm just wondering, um, the number of formally processed bullying or harassment incidents, like, how would one know whether or not their incident, incident was formally processed? Like, how would a parent know if their incident was?
If feedback is given to them or.
Yeah.
I'm not certain of how that occurs.
So I, I assume there's a referral, but then there are some incidents where they rise to the level of sort of that next level of intervention by principal or superintendent.
Yes. And certainly in those that, that where the title was that they've been formally processed, I'm certain that, that there's communication between the administrator and the parents, but.
Right.
I know that has been an area that the superintendent has taken a, a closer look at too. I know there's, there's improved and more thorough procedures in being developed and in place currently than what we've had in the past.
Yeah. The, the interesting trend that I noticed in this data right here is that none of the formerly processed bullying and harassment incidents at EMS were considered confirmed. Almost, almost exactly fifty percent of the incidents in FMS were considered confirmed. And one hundred percent of the incidences at EMS were confirmed. I just think it's kind of interesting that as they get, it's like, do, what it says to me is like, jeez, is there really no bullying at EES?
Well, they do a lot of education at EES about what is bullying versus what is navigating friendships.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I think that, that would be a great thing. I know Barb Smith is, and Bria Buzzell are doing a presentation at EES regarding all this.
Yeah.
Um, but I know in the past, they say that, they've said that a lot of it is just, the kids are so young, they're just learning how to navigate. And so it doesn't really end up going toward the bullying harassing is what they, different presentations they've done in the past.
They're at a different stage of development, really.
Exactly, and so, but it is interesting. I guess, you know, what I also wonder is, you know, this is ones that were formally processed and you know theoretically that there are some out there that haven't. So I mean, but this is a good way, you know, just to see where, at least get an idea of trends, but.
Yeah, I would be curious, like I said, to see year to year changes. And then the other thing I question, and maybe you don't know, Roger, is whether or not when we report this information to the state, is it just we report it and they take the information, or is there any back and forth about what the data, you know, says? I think that's just my general.
And then also.
Do you know, Roger?
I don't know.
Cause some of this, you don't report this apparently, but who reports it? Does special ed report it or like?
Building principals do.
Building principals.
And I'd also be curious, do we report the confirmed incidences or the processed incident, incidents?
I assumed, I assumed that we would actually hand, we would send this data to the state, is my guess.
That whole thing. That'd be interesting to know.
Yeah.
So it'd be helpful to see as samples or what was reported, yes.
Yeah, yeah, there's a little more robust, you know, what makes something processed versus confirmed, or what makes something confirmed versus processed, and what then gets reported.
Right, now understanding the context of some of these definitions is hard for us to understand what the numbers really mean.
That's what I was thinking, it just, it was a little flat, but, um, and then because I was at the website today and I saw that there was, you know, a tab on bullying, um, policy and procedure, I think, that then refers you to this parent-student handbook, which I thought would then tell you for each building who the reporting person is or something with some, that if I were a parent would know how to help support my kid, know how to advocate for themselves and whom they go to and what they do. And there was absolutely nothing in either of those that really tell a person how to, you know, help their kid ideally is what they are doing. And then if that's not happening for your child, then of course you take a more active advocacy role in it. But I think what we are always trying to teach kids is how to advocate for themselves and develop strength and confidence in doing that. But I, I found that the, go look here and then go look here, because that's what it, like.
Is that more website issue?
No, I actually don't think it was because it was in formal documents. It was in the, um, one of the first things right on the front page is the new, new bullying process and procedure or something tab. And it pulls you to the policy with a little more like a belief statement and something else. But it was mostly sort of policy language because I remember us proving it. And then it refers you to the parent-student handbook, and in the parent-student handbook, it refers you to the policy. Now, I mean, it doesn't in there tell, nothing tells you anywhere where if you have a child in a particular building, what would be the right process to help your child get through? Is it like teacher-guidance counselor? Or is it, um, is there a mandatory report person who's like the person you go to in this building or that building? Um, so that parents can help their children know what to do. It just, it was all very, there's a, there's a designated person in each building was the extent of the statement.
So it sounds like it was a little bit of an issue of just kind of silly website referring around and around in a circle.
It was a little circular one, but I honestly, I don't think it's the website. It was, it was what those two documents do.
But yeah, then.
They, they point to each other without any helpful sort of flow chart of, you know, in this building, these are the mandatory reported people. Kind of like you'd have, I don't know, if there's an emergency exit person or, you know, there's a fire marshal. You know, there's, there's somebody who, everybody in the building should know, students, parents and teachers is the go-to on this.
Right.
How-to.
The how-to of that would be awesome, and I'm sure probably, you know, save, you know, principals some help if people sort of really were clear on what they should be doing before it got to them.
Great feedback, and I see you taking notes, but I'll also share my notes with Mark.
Yep.
So there was no action on that. That was just the information that was requested and the information was provided. Which brings us to unity of control, uh, which is the next item on our agenda, and we're running way over guys, so I apologize. But good discussion earlier. So David took a stab at three point one, the monitoring report, unity of control. And David, unless you want to make any introductory remarks, I'll, I'll turn it over to the board members for questions.
I'll only say that let's turn the time back to seven forty so that we start at the appropriate time.
We leveled it up against you.
I consider it would be two parts to this, uh.
I think we've already had the discussion about this monitoring report.
If I remember correctly, the major purpose for this, uh, policy was to prevent an individual from going into the superintendent's office and saying, can you get this information for me? Or can you get this information for us? With that interpretation, I feel that, and Matt feels that we are in full compliance. However, as previously discussed, uh, when we have a meeting and somebody says, I think we should have more information, it has not really been consensus of the board. And with that, I will let you carry on, Brendan.
Any, uh, any other comments or questions about the monitoring report?
No, I would agree with it, and I think some of the stuff we talked about is possibilities for helping to sort of remedy that. Were the occasions we've done it?
Yes.
And the occasions we haven't, or the occasions there are sort of burning things that we need to have a circle closed on.
Right.
If that's always on our agenda, you know, Mark shouldn't have to feel blindsided and we shouldn't have to feel like he's going to be able to be responsive in that moment.
Yeah, so I just want to, you know, for the record, say that, um, last meeting, Rachel brought a question to me about the parent that we had the first night of our very first meeting this year. He had a concern or a question about a school trip. And, um, he addressed the full board, and I saw Mark, you know, taking notes and, and said, thank you for that feedback. And, um, and then Rachel's question was like, well, what ever happened to that? You know, did he ever get a response? Did he ever talk to Mark? Was there any ever a closing of the loop? And then we also received a few weeks, ten days ago, an email from a community member who had some concerns about changes in the language offerings at EMS specifically. And, um, we saw some back and forth, it was addressed to us, but it was also addressed to Mark and Kevin. And so there was a lot, there was. And so there was a lot, there was some back and forth on email, and I think most of us saw that back and forth. And so Kim's email this afternoon was, what whatever happened to that?
What happened? How do we respond?
Right, so so how can the board, you know, now that this has been brought to the board's attention, what is our obligation to respond or to be at least in the know about things that may cross that line of policy? You know, concern, questions or concerns about language and whether or not changes to the language program have an impact on ends policies is a, it's a policy conversation. Um, so I think.
It's frankly exactly the way that if a parent is bringing an issue to the board, it's because it is in the context of policy and so.
Right. Right, and this parent was very good in framing many of their questions in the form of the policy language.
Yeah.
So, um, so I think that, you know, I I agree that those are questions that we need to, as a board, we need to figure out, how do we circle back on those things? And how do we find out what happened in terms of closing the loop, just for our own edification to know that Brian got a response from his question that he brought to the first meeting? And and then the more, to me, the other, the other sort of thornier one is, well, how do we address a concern that comes up as a policy issue that's clearly related to policy? Um, and what do we do with that? What's our obligation at that point? Once we're made aware of that or or fully aware of the impact of a decision that's been made? I don't have the answers. I'm just telling you that that's sort of what I wrestle with.
Yeah, you know, because I feel like, and and like I was saying, it goes back to, we are representing the people, which include parents. It also includes other community member. You know, it includes our entire community. And if they're coming to us with a concern, I feel like we we need to be able to at least make sure that they're getting an answer, finding out if they're satisfied with that answer. And see if, you know, take the language example with ends, you know, if we're looking at, you know, kids and meeting the needs for whatever they're doing on future in life, you know, there could be a strong argument in terms of language.
Global society and, you know.
Um, with equal access for everybody, for the equal opportunities within school, you think about, you know, with trips, the funding, and how does, how do then we just make sure too that that information gets out to others? So just because the person X has that concern, brings it here, they may get an individual answer, but it's then pro- it's been presented in a public forum. And there may be others who have the exact same question, who are then waiting to hear what the response is. Um, and how can we then also be efficient in letting that become something that becomes more aware, so it's a shared response?
I think that there's another question there. If someone comes to us with an issue under policy governance, we would pass it on for Mark to wave the magic wand at. I agree that perhaps he could, uh, include in the general notes or items of interest if it was resolved, how it was resolved. But, uh, if a community member comes to us and just points something out to us, that is different than pointing something out and asking, when can you get back to us? And I don't think that anyone has asked us, when are you going to get back to us? So do we really have an obligation to get back or just to pass it on to the administration for their resolution? Realizing that in the case of a foreign language issue, for example, uh, there's always going to be people upset.
And we're never gonna be able to always, you know, I don't know, many systems can always provide everything that everyone wants. Um, I mean, I don't think that's even a budgetary.
And I think sometimes the hard thing for the board to sometimes differentiate between is that there's a difference between a parent who has not gotten a satisfactory answer and a parent who doesn't like the answer that they got. And so I think that's sometimes difficult for us to navigate, you know, is they're just not happy because they wanted a certain answer and they're not going to get it. Um, and so at that point, we either need to be get become at peace with it or decide if it raises, if it rises to the issue of board policy, you know, rises to that level of board policy. And I think in my mind, the two instances that have come up this year with Brian's, I mean, we probably could find a way for Brian's question to be addressed through policy. But to me, that was a little bit more means, maybe not, um, than the question that was brought up about language, which can have a really significant impact on the ends. So, um, I've written down those two things as questions to discuss with Mark about how can we sort of figure this out? How can we figure out the the proper process for closing the loop on questions that come to the board? And also, how do we respond when a stakeholder brings an issue to the board that does rise to the level of a broader policy question?
Yeah, I think, um, I think it's an important conversation to have with Mark, but I think it might be worth taking a second to figure out if we have an ideal process.
Yeah.
Because I I think David, um, we probably need to, even if it's, um, this is being addressed by the superintendent, will look forward to, you know, knowing that this has been resolved.
Right.
Type of language or it, I think ideally we'd have a process that we is standard in how we will handle, um, issues that come to the board.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think when it happens at the grocery store, we're standing around people, we're, I'm I'm always very clear to say, you want to touch base with your principal and the superintendent, if that, if that's, if it's a system thing or if it's, if it's a teacher thing, it's start with your teacher. You sort of tell them of the process and if I know that it's something that falls under a policy category, I'll point them to the policy.
Right.
And let them know that, you know, if this were not, if this were to rise to a policy matter, a violation of policy, that is, does become a board issue, but
Right.
Um, otherwise, those are things that are spoken to in policy, but are better handled through other channels.
Mm-hmm.
So when when we do that, when they're speaking with people, we probably should have a way if people are emailing us
Right.
and copying us on things that we routinely will handle.
Right.
Cause I feel.
That type of outreach, because if they've taken the time to express themselves to us in matters of concern,
Right.
policy or otherwise, we probably want to have some language acknowledging.
Right, right.
So that way they get a response from the board, whether it's from Brendan or something, that we at least have, we have read and acknowledged it. And that, yes, you know, Kevin in this case is the proper one to have the meeting with and and to go through the steps.
Right.
And it may be.
But I just feel like if they've included us in it, to ignore that or not to reply, just waiting to see what the process is, to me, doesn't, something doesn't feel right.
Right. Yeah, I did actually, I did actually send a reply to the to the email about the language thing today.
Okay.
Because I I'd seen enough conversation to be like, just so you know, we hear you and I'm going to be bringing it, you know, to the board will bring it to Mark's, you know, we'll we'll ask Mark for more information about this particular issue without necessarily promising anything, cause I knew I knew that we still needed to figure out what exactly we wanted.
Right.
Uh, as a result of this issue being brought up, but I I did want to at least acknowledge, although it was a little bit late, um, that we received it and appreciated the feedback.
And I think maybe that also makes expectations clear, like we were copied in it with, um, Kevin and Mark.
Right.
Makes expectations clear for Kevin and Mark that, you know, thank you for your concern. I understand, you know, you're scheduling to meet with Kevin.
Right.
We'll look forward to feedback from, you know, the administration and from you to understand that this matter's
Right.
been responded to or, you know, that we're, you know, clear with Kevin, clear with Mark, that we do want to know how this was resolved.
Right, so to.
At bottom line, you'd like to know what the response was.
What the response was, um.
So if you're
and even, you know.
Further discussions, you'll know what the district's position was, I guess.
And it's, it's not even.
That was exactly, I think, the point of the email I had sent is like, okay, so I have those questions. I wouldn't know how to answer those questions in defense, and those are policy related questions.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, I mean, I think that our board response to an email, for example, should be at a minimum to acknowledge, to confirm the process and then to and to promise some sort of follow-up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and whether that's from us or from the administration, that there's going to be follow-up.
But I think if it's from the administration, which nine times out of ten, I would suspect it would be
Right.
that we are copied on the follow-up.
Yeah.
So that we know there's closure.
So that that closes the loop. Exactly, that's the closure, I think.
It's those hanging little things out there.
Yeah, the, I guess the only time that might become an issue is if there's a privacy concern about the, in, you know, so.
Right. The ma- the matter at hand of a particular student.
Right, so that, that might be the only.
So maybe we don't just get copied on it, but we at least get an update.
But it might be that there is a
Right.
There is and then there is benefit to having there be an email response that closes a loop on something for Mark's sake, for the parent's sake, for the board's sake.
Right.
That says, even in confidential matters per our conversation, you know, these are our understandings in a general way.
Just remember that emails are, uh, considered public documents.
Absolutely, and I think that's as much as anything, the importance of it.
Right.
In my mind, that, you know, as a parent, I would feel gratified in that. As, you know, as superintendent, I would feel as though this is, I have a a clear path of having closed this.
Right, right.
So as an administrator, I'd I'd feel good about having evidence of closure.
Yeah.
Um, so.
I'm thinking about our agenda, the things you want to add back into the agenda at the end, future agenda topics. And the future agenda topic might be, okay, Mark, so-and-so talked about some issue here today.
Right.
Future agenda topic, next meeting, feedback.
Right.
I'm like.
Like, yeah, like I think that, that, for example, your question, and it should have, I should have encouraged you to bring it up at the meeting, that that would have been a good time to raise that, you know, hey, Brian was here the first meeting, what was the resolution on that? If you're not prepared to answer that tonight, that's okay. But maybe at the next meeting, you could bring this up to speed on what happened.
And following our policy, we'd have to vote on, we would, right? I think that's exactly what the right occasion to do that would be is is the full board interested in this information?
That's true. Right.
Or if this is the process that we're agreeing on as a board now, that's just each of us remembering to say, wait a minute, this one didn't get closed yet.
Right.
So then we don't have to vote on it every time. It's, this is part of our process.
Right, so that's, that's a good point, yeah.
So either we vote on it or we make it part of our process.
Right, so and I can talk to Mark about what he would prefer, um, cause I think you're right. I don't know, I would feel a little weird voting on that.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Unless we just made it as a general agenda item to close any of those loops and I'm not exactly the one.
That's what I'm speaking, okay.
Right.
All of our open cases.
But in terms of unity of control in this particular policy, I think that we all, I, no, it's all, it's all good. I'm just, I'm just, you know, it's, yeah, ten of nine. Um, so, uh, as far as this policy goes, um, I'm happy to, um, to adopt it tonight, but I I do think that I will be on guard and I'm asking all of us to be on guard together that when we're discussing a monitoring report, cause that's typically when it happens, and somebody goes, you know what we really need to see? Is we need to see this piece of data, or we need this follow-up, or, you know, that's when we all need to be like, oh, you know, spider sense is tingling here and, uh.
Right, is that a hole for everybody or is it just a hole for me?
Right, so, so who's requesting that?
Right.
And and if you, if David's saying to Mark, I need to see this, then we all need to go, wait a minute, you know, you can't request that directly.
Cause that's the case we all want and
Right.
and then we vote on it and table it, or we
Right.
vote and appreciate that there might be times we're not going to be five oh.
Right, right. And your and your email this afternoon about what was the follow-up on that issue, I think that, um, to me, I would love to be able to figure that out as a process piece, you know, so that we're regularly checking in on there were a couple of issues that came to our attention over the course of the two weeks between meetings, how were they resolved? You know, and that would be a standing, maybe a standing item, you know, versus, I need to see this data set.
Right.
You know, or we need to hear a report from Ellen. You know, that's a different level of request that I, that I think we would need to be like, all right, timeout. Do we, what do we think the merits are of that particular request and does the full board approve of that request? And then it becomes a, you know, a task for Mark.
And if we had process in the language issue, for example, or or it wasn't just an incidental, it was one of those that sort of went up as a red flag, like, oh, wait, that's not really just an incidental.
Right.
That's like its own item. There were a couple of places where in doing better process going forward, it would have been an agenda item and not an incidental, and we would have either had the answers or not had the answers. And we would have had a process that closed the loop on an inquiry that rises to superintendent, board, policy,
Yeah.
principal level and includes copying on the board. So a few different places.
Yeah.
In hindsight.
Yes.
If we do better process, we're not still asking, saying, wait a minute, I have the same question she has, so.
Right, right, right.
And I don't know how to answer when other people ask me, so.
Yeah.
We need a little more on it type of stuff, so.
I would agree. So is there a motion on David's finely worded, um, monitoring report?
I'm moved that we accept David's, uh, mon- policy, monitoring, policy, monitoring report as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. The monitoring report has been accepted. We have eight minutes left of our scheduled time together and we had scheduled, oh, I don't know, an hour?
Something like that.
Yeah, well, we've already done one of those things.
Well, but unity of control, I think, was within that hour.
That's true, that's true.
So.
One of the things I really hoped that that we would have time for tonight, and it doesn't look like it's going to happen, is, um, a conversation about linkage opportunities with owners regarding the ends policies. Our next meeting, my voice is going, at our next meeting, um, there is on the docket, um, some significant reporting out about ends policies. I know that we, I know that our our idea about linkage wasn't necessarily to get people to come to those meetings,
Mm-hmm.
but to more engage in a conversation with our community about ends policies. So I don't know if there's an opportunity that's naturally occurring here where if we understand that the information that will be presented on the fourteenth might be worthy of inviting people to come here, we could simply do at least the bare minimum of inviting folks to come to hear, um, the reports that Mark has to give on the fourteenth.
I think that'd be great.
I think that'd be great.
And and we can try and use linkages that are already out there between the principals.
P T O.
P T O, and they're doing a weekly email blast now.
Right. There might even be, I I don't know about the schedule, but there might even be an opportunity for Essex Reporter, um, even if it's not a full perspective piece, maybe a letter to the editor inviting folks.
Yeah.
Can we do an alert now, or is that inappropriate use of the alert?
Does Mark have a sense of what that, um, I would just touch base with him and see how he intends to present it if.
Yeah. Yeah. By the way, Mark, we're inviting the entire town to come and hear your presentation. Yeah, so I definitely want to give them the heads up that that this is what we're thinking, that this might be an opportunity, an easy opportunity to invite some people to come and hear about the great work that's been happening in the district and get his take on whether or not he feels up to that being a full-on public, uh, uh, event. Um, it's technically a report to the board, but if there's a way to kind of kill two birds with one stone, it might be nice to have that opportunity.
And I think it'd be great in that we are trying to look back at our ends and see if they're saying what we want them to say, and we're trying to get the community. We're, we're going to be looking for community engagement in that process. And so if we could let them see what they are.
Yeah, right.
In action, that would be great, and it might even be able to be sort of presented in that way, come and see where, you know, a report on our current ends policies and stay tuned for follow-up to assure that these policies are, um, reflecting the, um, what our community is seeking for outcomes for kids. We, we could even give the tiny bit of history, like these were developed back then with your input.
Right.
We're reviewing them again.
Opportunity to.
You know, come and see what we've got now and how we're monitoring these and then come back and help us.
Yeah. Yeah, I like that.
Look at this, um, to make sure it's still doing what you wanted it to do.
That was the best, like, five minutes of the entire meeting.
That was great. My, my, my suggestion, you know, would be that we have a very different setup. If we're going to be bringing people in,
Sure.
um, so that none of us have our backs to people and.
Backs to anybody. How did we sit that? We sat one day and we didn't have backs to anybody. Where were we? We were all over there.
It was the, yes, it was all over there facing.
We should have a V formation.
Yeah, or, and and if we're anticipating it being big enough, should it be in here?
Right.
Um.
There might be ten people at most at the moment.
Yeah, we might sit in here, but.
Maybe three.
I, I would almost think we would probably still fit in here, quite honestly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I, part of me thinks that we'll get far more feedback. That may not be our best avenue for feedback, but again, we're putting it out there.
Yeah, I guess the thing that I want to be thinking about is technically it's a presentation to the board. So what is the pro- the process for then allowing the audience to participate in the conversation, you know?
I would invite questions probably.
Yeah, my, my personal feeling is our biggest weakness as a, in our outreach is the relatively closed feeling that we have towards the public in a meeting. I mean, yes, this is a business meeting between the six of us.
Right.
But then we, then we wonder why people don't come. And it's like, you know, I wouldn't come to this, you know, are you kidding me? Um.
Well, and that's why I'm saying is that this would have to, we would have to agree going in that this would be very different.
This is a public forum as opposed to a six-person meeting.
There's a portion of the meeting that is technically a public forum.
Yeah.
Might be the way to go.
And I think, um, in advance of budget consideration, I think it's
Timing is great.
Timing is really good to be sort of highlighting how we're monitoring the twenty million dollars that's being spent to achieve outcomes for kids.
Right.
I, I, you know, I. I, I, you know, I, not to make it, it's not all about the money, but it is a precursor to the conversation and it's just exactly the way Mark looks at budget for us-
Right.
-and presents budget to us in a way that is tying it back to the outcomes for kids and ends and it's-
It might be, you know, it might be an opportunity too for, for me or one of, another board member sort of introduce the conversation and to be like, this is how we do our work, these are the ends that were, you know, endorsed by the community five years ago or whatever it was, and these are the ones that we continue to monitor, just to give them a, not to kill them with policy governance, but just to give them an overview of how it works and then introduce, you know, some kind of formal presentation that Mark would give about the policies.
And it might also give us an opportunity, 'cause we'll have the budget schedule, which I think we have it, um, to say, you know, we'll be looking at each of these areas in the context of ends.
Yeah, right.
Throughout this budget process, so here are the, all the dates, we understand people can't devote their entire winter to it, um, but just know that that is the way we do look at budget and it makes a really nice opportunity to tie that together.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe get more people joining us for earlier budget explanations that are those big categories.
Well, let me, um, let me bring this idea, excuse me, to Mark, get his thoughts on it and, um, as we move forward, and if there's a, a big publicity push, I may ask for individual board members to help with that, whether it's through personal connections to PTO and other groups or just getting the word out on your local, you know, front porch forum or Facebook, um, that would be great.
And I think it's something for us to consider also, um, that when we look at getting it out into the community, um, I had a conversation with, uh, Burlington School Board Member and just different, some of the different ways they're trying to engage their community more.
Yeah.
Um, and they have, one of the things they're attempting now, how successful they are, you know, he wasn't, he didn't really elaborate on, but engaging in different avenues such as going to Rotary and all these different places and presenting there. And I just want us to make sure that we're not always expecting people to come to us. There may be a lot of times where we really need, if we're really looking for some of this information, maybe we need to go out to them in different formats, um, beyond the Essex Reporter or beyond, um, TV.
Yeah.
Um, and looking at those opportunities in the future.
That's a great, yeah, that's a great point.
And brings up the conversation we had about three years ago and we were sitting over in that corner having it, uh,
Yeah.
About what groups we would wanna reach out.
That's right, that's right. You know, as, as I was, I, I've been a, an audience member for the safe, Community Safety Night and also some Heart and Soul meetings and the presence of a professional facilitator for those kinds of conversations is really helpful. So one of the things that we might wanna consider, and when we get to that point of wanting to have the broader conversation, is do we wanna bring in a professional facilitator to help us? So that we're not necessarily facilitating the conversation, but so we can be more active in the, in participating in it. So it's just, I wanted to put that out there, 'cause I think that has been a really successful model for some other groups in the community and it, we might wanna take a page out of their playbook.
Yeah.
Seen examples of any other groups maybe using some professional assistance in surveying the public?
Surveying the public.
Heart and Soul did, right?
Is an alternative to bring people to meetings, you know?
Right.
Kind of survey with key questions on the ends and so forth.
Yeah, I think Heart and Soul's done a pretty good job of getting, uh, some surveys out.
Yeah, and again, they did a lot of legwork for that.
Yeah, and they were out in the community.
And they're professionals.
Yeah, that's right.
There's that.
There's that too, yeah, it helps.
Um, speaking of which, they have a meeting on Wednesday night at six thirty. Um, it's their Action Summit-
Right.
-in case anyone is interested at the Essex High School cafeteria.
Yes, and I think Mark was encouraging some of us to attend if possible, because I think he, I think he plans on being there as well. 'Cause they have questions about engaging the educational community in that conversation.
And Liz had, had sent me an email and asked, it is my intent to be there.
Great.
It's a lot on the calendar, but-
Yes, there is.
I would be there for some portion of it. Um, I am just noticing Brendan that, um, I would assume if we were going to do anything to the reporter, the date on that would be like the twenty-sixth.
This Friday.
I think so, right? That's, that's Thursday, but Friday probably.
Right, I think I've, I think I've submitted stuff on Friday before.
I know, I think she's, she's very good to us.
She likes us painfully.
She puts up with us. Alright.
There you go.
She knows we're doing our best. I just wanna, I counted backwards, I think that's-
No, question, I'm assuming RETN's not gonna be here for that big presentation on the fourteenth, that's not one of theirs to be here. Which is kind of a bummer.
I could certainly circle back with, um, my contact at RETN. His name is escaping me at the moment, um, to see if maybe they can- What's that?
Scott.
Scott.
It might be Scott, yeah, to see if we can switch dates.
I'm just thinking if we're looking for having something that's gonna-
Right, if you guys wanna get some juicy material, that's the best.
That'd be more exciting than watching a blank screen while we leave for half an hour, you know?
So I will let RETN know about if they are able to change their schedule, which is, I know sometimes difficult. That might be the better meeting to come to in October. So, um, that is the only other, I'm looking at the work plan, uh, that is the only item on the agenda is the ends, outcomes, monitoring reports. There's nothing due from the board, uh, for monitoring reports, so we're all in the clear there. But I will be sure to follow up on, um, assistance with publicity, once I get a chance to connect with Mark, about, um, seeing if we wanna weave a public forum portion into our next meeting to begin that conversation about ends with our owners.
I would like to propose one other agenda item, not necessarily for that time, although it may be relevant, especially if we have a crowded, uh, people and we go, we keep touching on it, we keep, I was laughing about it. I would like to have some presentation on what is it gonna take to get a better website? What do we need to do to actually stop just complaining about it and actually-
I went to something for that.
Yeah, they're working on it.
I didn't have any homework when I left, but, so whatever is not happening is not my fault. There were a number of us around the table this summer, at the end of the summer, some teachers, tech folks, parents.
Kathy was there.
Kathy was there.
Yeah.
So, um, I actually haven't heard what's gone on with progress around that, have you, Roger?
I haven't heard specific items, I know that's mentioned in tonight's report too, that there's been progress, but it
Yeah, so even that little bit of-
Sounds like I'd like to know specifically what the progress is.
So, would that be incidental information if I asked Mark to provide us with an update on where we are with the website redesign? Because I know that's the intention.
Incidental.
Probably.
Do people need a full presentation on that?
No, we don't need a full presentation.
No, we don't need, no, but if, if he can give us more than just it's progressing-
Yep.
But make a little bit more elaborate information about what's happening in incidental, that's enough. I mean, just so we know where it is and we know that there are things happening if we're still saying the same thing in April.
Update on the website redesign possibly with a timeline or-
Yeah, timeline would be nice.
Yeah.
And to the extent that that, I'm not exactly sure that I can think where it belongs in policy, but a five-minute agenda item, maybe link, like linkage to parents or maybe it's our policy, like linkage to owners. Um, because another sort of way to look at the incidental information is there a public consumption benefit out of it. And that would be one of those things where we might be able to find where it belongs in a policy and say, oh, that is sort of beneficial for the public to know that this, we are hearing you. We're frustrated with it, we're working on our, within our limitations to figure out how to do it better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would've really annoyed parent last night.
Trying to find him.
Yeah, it was just, I was like, unbelievable.
Yeah.
And you say, I share your frustration.
I was having a conversation with myself, I was so upset.
So I will put that down as a, um, as an update, uh, from Mark, for sure.
Cool, thank you.
And if there's a quick five-minute public statement about it, that might be a good thing.
As opposed to just us getting an incidental bullet.
Right, might be good for other people to know what the plan is.
Especially if there's, you know, thirty annoyed parents out there.
Oh, I'm sure there's. Um, any other, uh, feedback about tonight's meeting? And any other future agenda items, uh, besides website update?
My only feedback is, we went twenty-five minutes over, but I think it was good. I mean, I don't think that's a bad thing, I think we had good conversation. I, I don't-
I think we're five minutes over.
Well, according to the timeline in the agenda.
Oh, really?
Okay.
But, uh-
I just assumed-
I always figured nine is, so, we're, we're five minutes over.
Yeah.
Five minutes over.
I think it was a valuable conversation.
Great.
Oh, you just blew the budget.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, I second that motion, non-debatable, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.